Good evening and welcome to school committees meeting of December fourth. I'll call this meeting to order at six thirty two P M. We'll begin just by reading off the agenda. We'll begin with public comment and then remarks from the superintendent chair and our student representatives. We'll have a consent agenda consisting of consideration of a grant of ten thousand eight hundred seventy one euros from the Italian Ministry of Affairs and international cooperation toward the Italian language department at the high school. Consideration of out of state trip to Princeton, New Jersey by the ninth to twelfth grade students for Latin quiz bowl competition. Consideration of the high school P F A donation of four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and consideration of minutes from August twenty first twenty twenty five. Then we'll begin with reports and action items, including a biannual review of bullying response and intervention plan, the budget subcommittee and state of the town update, consideration of policy J K A A restraint policy and a first reading of policy A K I K F E competency determination. Then we'll have next meetings, future agenda items and an executive session for purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel. And for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with units A and C. As the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee and then followed by adjournment. So without further ado, we will move back to public comment. And I would ask that I see that we have one person here at least for public comment. Mister Marin, do you have our preamble for a public comment? This time, so I don't have to remember it.
No, I do not. I could find this.
You did a great job last time, Karen.
But now my, now my head is stuffy. Give him just a minute. But I'll summarize. So our public comment is for a period of twenty minutes. And we ask our is for is a is a bit of time is a period of about twenty minutes and it's a it's an opportunity for individuals from the town to be able to speak on issues that are coming before the committee or on issues that that pertain to the committee. We ask that individuals give their name and their relation to the school. And it is not a discussion, debate or dialogue between citizens and the school committee, but it's a chance to offer your to express your opinion on issues of school committee business. And if you have anything that is, if you would like, you may also submit your comments to the school committee for inclusion in our public record and that would go to schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org.
And Madam Chair, I know we have a three minute limit for each person. I'm happy to keep time if that's helpful.
Yes, thank you so much, although we just have one person at this point, so.
We have two.
Oh, we have two. So Mister Biani, if we could elevate him.
I guess I'm doing it all here this evening, so I think I got him.
Can you hear?
Can't see you yet.
We can.
You can hear me but not see me?
Not yet. We can see your name.
Would you like, that's weird. There's no camera option. Would you like me to just go ahead and and provide my comment even though you can't see me?
Please go ahead.
Okay.
We recognize your voice.
Thank you. So Paris Biani, I live at three oh seven Cross Street. I'm a member of the select board and the chair of the State of the Town Committee. So as all of you know, we've been engaged in the state of the town process, design a comprehensive financial plan for the town for the last six months. And and you know that because many of you are members of that process. And as chair of that effort, I wanted to speak to you tonight to clarify some confusion that I've heard about our fiscal picture, some of which came up with the budget subcommittee yesterday. That confusion seems to be about two points. First, that we can sustain our present or even growing levels of spend without an operating override. And second, that we can instead rely on drawing down our operating reserves as an alternative. Let me lay out some facts for the record. We have a four million dollar structural deficit, which would grow to five to eight million dollars next year. Our operating reserves are about twenty three million at about eighteen percent and would be drawn down to as low as ten percent, given our growing expenses. The two largest growth drivers are the schools budget and municipal health insurance, two thirds of which is for schools employees. With two years of large accelerating deficits, we would therefore almost certainly lose our triple A bond rating just as we cross our fingers for good news with Morocco. And it would make it virtually impossible to ever rebuild our reserves since our model already includes about one point seven million or more of municipal departmental turnbacks each year. I would add the planning model for the state of the town was built by myself and a former select board chair who did all of the modeling in the last override. It was vetted by our comptroller and members of our finance committee, and it is publicly available for all residents to see. The clear takeaway from the model is that without a structurally balanced budget for F Y twenty seven, all departments, schools included, would likely be facing significant cuts. To get to structural balance, we will need to do two things. Implement a revenue solution in the form of an operating override and achieve a reasonable level level of level services spend from all departments. On the latter point, a super majority of the select board stated to you in a letter that the highest figure we are including in our modeling for level services is four percent per annum. And even with that, we would need a large operating override. We also should continue to pursue efficiencies everywhere we can find them, which will help bring our level services growth number down and extend the duration of any override that we have. So if there are any questions about our operating budget or our reserves, I would welcome an opportunity to speak in depth of all of you at your table. All of you know where to find me. So thank you to everyone on the school committee this evening. And I will see all of you tomorrow or several of you tomorrow morning when we go through the school's budget for the for the second session. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mister Biani. Next up, we have Miss Darcy.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you to the entire school committee and Dr. Hackett and the other members of the administration. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Do you have camera capability for your?
Like Peross, I am camera challenged at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah. So thanks. So I think I just wanted to take a moment to speak about the importance of school councils. And many of you have heard me talk about them before, so I'm gonna try to make a slightly different point right now, which is that, you know, when you read the C E S report, there were three takeaways. One was we curricular adherence, the second had to do with M T S S, and the third had to do with this cultural issue of shame or, I guess, shame. That's the simplest way to to characterize it. This idea that parents and teachers had issues with problems with the curriculum that they wanted to raise and they didn't feel that they had a venue to raise those concerns. And I feel that the school council is the obvious antidote to that shame. I feel that it's a place where teachers and parents can get together and vet and have meaningful dialogue about challenges that the school is the schools are facing and that families are facing. And I was listening to the C E S report a couple of years ago and I remember the C E S chair sort of saying, this really has to come from the school community. The solutions to these problems have to come from us. And it's been eighteen months since that report and I haven't heard any real meaningful conversations about how do we address the shame. And I think we already have the answer to that. That's the school councils, that dialogue and relationship building is the solution. I don't think we need anybody else to come and tell us that. I also know that I think a member of the community and perhaps also the members of the school committee are looking at amending the current school committee policy on school councils. I think that that is meaningful work. You obviously want the policy to reflect your true values around the school council. But I encourage the school committee to think deeply about what these democratic bodies mean to our town. Not only what they mean to the parents, but also what they might mean to teachers. And before you make changes to the policy, I ask that you solicit teacher and parent feedback. I ask that you educate the community about what these democratic bodies are, what they're for, the important responsibilities that the school council members have to one another to not only advocate for the interests of their own children, but for the children of their neighbors. I I want to encourage parents to, when they have issues relating to the school, to remember that you're not alone and that other families face whatever issues it is that you're facing. Many more people are dealing with that. Similarly, teachers, teachers are not alone. If they're having a challenge, other teachers would be facing the same thing. So I just ask that you engage in a process that's meaningful and that primarily educates families that this is the means by which to have an impact on our democracy and on the public education in the town of Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other attendees who might like to?
I don't see any other raised hands.
Seeing none, then I shall close public comment at this point. And we will move on to remarks from the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Head into December and getting close to the to the break. There's been obviously a lot going on and we've been busily getting ready for, as it already been kind of foreshadowed this evening, a fairly significant state of town committee meeting tomorrow. That has really occupied that and clearly contract negotiations for me in particular, those two things have occupied a good deal of of my time. And we started with the D C review, which Dr. Allen gave an overview of, I think it's, I think it was the class meeting. It seems like, right? Yeah. And actually, I might, I had an interview today. And we, they took us through some some standard questions and they will be, they'll be on site next week. So Dr. Allen has done an incredible job pulling that all together. And so that process will be in play. Those are really, other than that, with our really contract negotiations continuing and working on the budget, which is also obviously linked, it connected very strongly to the state of the town work as well. Then that's that's primarily what we've been doing in the central office.
Sorry, searching around for my.
And that would conclude my comments.
That's what I realized. So, and I was also, I'm going to cede my remarks. And I was just looking to see if our student representatives are here. But I do not see.
Don't see that.
So. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Hackett. Any other comments or questions from the from committee members for Dr. Hackett? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the grant from the Italian Ministry of Affairs and International Cooperation, an out of state trip to Princeton, New Jersey for our Latin team, a P F A donation and minutes from August twenty first.
Madam Chair, I would be happy to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Miss Bergstrom? Miss Bergstrom?
Aye. Sorry.
No, no worries. Mister Hopcroft?
Aye.
Miss Mignardi? Thank you. And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Good luck to our Latin team and thank you to the P F A for your generosity and to Miss Chella for your work with the Italian Ministry. Let us see. Okay, reports and up and action items. So we now have a second reading and consideration of the updated bullying response and intervention plan. And let me see. This was last updated in twenty 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 two. It's subject to a biannual update, which was begun in twenty twenty four. Aaron Kuhn in our central office has been working to complete that review this year. And we are bringing you the draft or the draft of the update, which is mostly grammatical and there are some further specifics, I believe, around McCall and high school and Winchester High School education on bullying. Dr. Hackett, do you have anything further to add on that?
No, I do not. Madam Chair, it really is an update. And we just want to make sure that the what you just mentioned, McCall and the high school, that's in the curriculum section, just kind of a really a couple of paragraphs, talking about what we do from a curriculum standpoint around trying to to work toward bullying prevention. So you've had this plan actually for quite some time. We brought it, we backed off, we brought it, we backed off. And this is the biannual review. And essentially what you're doing is signing off that it has, you have reviewed it as an update as required on the statute, which is every two years.
And I would also just point out that there is, goodness, now I have lost the page. But the bullying response and intervention plan goes up to a certain point and that that is and it's marked clearly at the bottom of the page where this is what the committee is approving. And then there are several attachments that are just for reference. Those are separate from the, they're just exhibits.
Madam Chair, are you ready to accept a motion on this?
I am.
I would move that we approve the bullying response and intervention plan as presented, given that it's our second reading and time for the committee to take action.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Miss Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mister Hopcroft?
Aye.
Miss Mignardi?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. Thank you. For that, and let's see, next we will move on to. I'm gonna have to go back to my to my notebook, so.
It's so budget update.
If it doesn't come up on the screen, I don't know.
I had to, I had to hand it over to Andrew.
Yes, okay. So our budget subcommittee had just met yesterday and has been working very diligently with Dr. Hackett and with Mister Marin. So we look forward to the update from Miss Mignardi and Miss Bergstrom.
I will, if I can actually get us, just kick us off. This should look familiar to those of you who were either on the budget subcommittee or who attended the meeting. We, what we're presenting tonight, if we could go to slide two, is we, the work that we've really been doing in preparation for tomorrow's state of town committee meeting, we've been working within the state of town model. And we'll show you some of those figures in a little bit. But for the level service drivers, I'll let Andrew take these slides, just kind of walk you through as we develop F Y twenty seven level service budget. These are the main drivers that we are, that are actually driving, as the term implies, the 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 in percent increase.
Good evening, everyone. So as we.
Are you, are you guys, sorry to interrupt. Are you presenting the slides? I don't see the slides in folder. I don't see them on the screen.
They're on the screen.
Your share was on before. Okay, I'll keep looking for it.
Yeah, go, go into gallery view. Maybe that'll help.
I was gonna say, they are on the screen.
Yes. I was going to say.
Go, go ahead. I'll I'll figure it out.
All right. Yes, so seeing as, as we noted in our quarter one update and yesterday's budget subcommittee, there are several areas that we've been watching in terms of our budget this year and how that sort of impacts level services for next year. So one of those areas is our current contract negotiations. So three out of the five remain outstanding. So so far it, so far we've ratified unit B and unit C. So the others are remaining there. In special education, where we see a lot of fluctuation, those numbers. It's mostly, so this year especially around our, our district replacements. And so some changes with, you have students replaced at residential school. And then along with the associated transportation for that. And so this year we saw a change in our extended school year programming around special education. So we added bus services for that. And then the transportation for in and out of district, there's been changes there too. And the last couple of ones, we have been monitoring our athletics program. So as you know, from a few years or updates, that program has sort of been surviving on some slight increase in fees and then also spending down their reserve funding. And so that reserves funding is is essentially expense as we entered this year's budget. So we're looking at some challenges with that budget this year and then how we budget for that in upcoming years. And then substitute costs are also always fluctuating, something we typically sort of estimate. And so then we really need to probably budget higher as we go forward with a lot of those unknowns. Then we also noted our October one enrollment numbers. So every October, we submit our enrollment counts to D C and so that's what's on screen here. Dr. Hackett, do you want to speak to the slide?
If we could go back to enrollment, I think it's important to note that the Boston University did a, did a study on Eastern Massachusetts, Hericum Districts, so our peer group, and they're seeing similar trends, a slight dip in elementary. Sorry. Take it away, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you. You can take the next slide if you'd like to.
No, so we were looking, one of the main drivers was special education and the E S Ps and resources that we have to hire to support individualized education plans. Individualized education plans are exactly that. You get pullout or push-in services where you have one-on-one time with an individual with a, with a professional. And so when a student goes on an I E P, it's important to note that that would be unbudgeted because it's hard for us to anticipate the number of students that go on I E Ps throughout the school year and a support staff member that would have to potentially be hired if it went over a certain number within a building that's for the available personnel that's to service those students that are on I E Ps. So this is just to look at trends between elementary, middle and high. And so you can see coming out of COVID, more kids on I E Ps. I don't think there's a big surprise there. But we can see it steadily going down slightly, but so has enrollment in those in K to five. So it'd be interesting to see the comparison as a percentage of the total base.
To really. I'll also note, Miss Mignardi, that those are the kids who were at six to eight is our highest level, who were in grade during COVID. So it may.
Right, yes, that's a very good point.
Um, so we may actually be seeing a decrease in the number of kids who need special education services proportionally.
In a couple of years, yeah. Yeah. So do you want to go to the the next slide? So again, another one of the cost drivers are steps and column moves by unit A, the our classroom teachers. So the the steps are basically predictable. Almost everyone that's not on the top, the top step moves up one. And that usually results in a two to four percent increase, I believe. But column moves are less predictable. It can cause spikes in costs in certain years and often cluster around years when teachers finish a degree. The availability of online courses have encouraged more participation and shown more activity around column moves. So that's something that we're using the current contract cycle to get some predictability around those because they are significant factors in our budget. And F Y twenty seven to F Y thirty projections. So the state of the town model is running a four percent level services assumption for schools. And F Y twenty seven, so we factored in for F Y twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, that four percent in F Y twenty seven. In order to make that four percent possible, we have to consider looking at a five percent level services for F Y twenty seven. And that is still taking into account significant efficiencies that we have to go through, you know, when we talk about the the reserves that we have to go through, like athletics that we've completely depleted at this point. And the substitutes and E S Ps for supporting I E Ps and teacher absences. All of those basically have to be factored in in order to get to this five percent.
And Dr. Hackett or Mister Marin, can you explain to the committee how in F Y twenty five, we were well higher than four percent and F Y twenty six were higher than four percent for level services and in F Y twenty seven, we're higher than four percent. The four percent has come to us as a suggestion from the select board of what we should adhere to. But it doesn't seem since in in recent memory of mine that we have ever been at four percent for level services.
Can I, can I add to that question? Just I think it's a similar vein, which is, has the subcommittee considered or thought about how, given our legal requirements to serve every? Given our legal requirements to serve every kid that comes to us with every special need, how? You know, where, where there might be flexibility, if there is flexibility, I, I, I just don't see how. How that works, and I think it's, I think it's the same, the other side of what you're asking.
I think it is, I think it is, Mr. Hopcroft.
So, good, whoop, go ahead. No, that's fine, so, but I'll, I'll, let me say a few things, one, we have had budget years where we were actually below four percent since I've been here. Those were in the heady days of having Esther funding to offset increases, which you know. Many of you were, had gone, have gone through that with us. And we use Esther funding and Opera funding and some other funding that we had access to through COVID. To help really offset some of the increases that we were seeing, primarily in our district placements when we first returned, that was a pretty significant driver, so. This is, this is the state of the town model, and you all sat through and went through town meeting last year for the FY twenty six budget that we're sitting in. You know that in that FY twenty six budget that we are sitting in, we were able to, with your support and a supportive town meeting. We were able to, to actually do some programmatic enhancements, we, for example, we added two and a half. Mass specialists at the elementary level, along with some other things that we had done and have done. To it for this particular fiscal year, that, that effort was really the first time. That since I've been here, since we came out of COVID, that we really added. In a, in a little bit more of a meaningful way, we've, we've, we have added, for example, pieces of Mandarin at the high school to accommodate for. The additional growth in, in programming, but we have, we've not added much in terms of program enhancement, or in terms of supporting what we're currently doing. So, the six point four six percent represents that, we also know that. We have not settled yet with unit A, which is a significant part of our budget, the. The teachers, well, personnel in general is about eighty-eight percent of our total budget, as you know, and unit A is about seventy percent of that eighty-eight percent, so. It's, that is a, that is a, that is the biggest driver that we have. We have settled with C, which is our second biggest unit, that's the professionals, the ESPs. But we are obviously making some assumptions in and around FY twenty seven, because we don't have a settled contract yet. We also are making some assumptions around FY twenty eight, as well as twenty six candidly. But in, in FY twenty eight as well, because that would be the final year of a three-year agreement. FY twenty nine and thirty would be, we would be negotiating presumably successor agreement to the one that we hopefully will be successfully completing. Soon, so these are projections, I can tell you that. Based on what we're assuming, that the FY twenty seven state of the town model of five percent. Is not enough to get us to a level services budget, so what you're going to see is. As we move into the state of the town discussion, as we, as we prioritize what we believe. We need to do for the school department, for what we're calling an essential services budget. With additional funding that would come from an override, you'll see that we have worked in some funding. Also to support FY twenty seven level services, the main issue with the FY twenty seven level services budget. Is that we had several things happen, and Mr. Mayor spoke to him on a previous slide, that happened after the FY twenty six budget, the budget we're in. Was passed at town meeting, so we've incurred expenses that were unanticipated and unbudgeted for. In the FY twenty six budget, that obviously, we don't have it in this budget, and we have to pick it up in FY twenty seven. I also want to be clear that it is December fourth, right, since I've been here. We've never been at this point this early, there's a lot of fluctuation, we're making some assumptions, I think they are, they're. Well-grounded assumptions, I think they have strong rationale behind them. But I also want to point out that we've not made any adjustments to this either, so. The level services budget, as you know, is the budget that we say. If we just are gonna support everything we're doing right now, next year, this is the amount of money it would cost. We've not taken any retirements out of here, we've not looked at a, at this point, any elementary class sections or any secondary class sections. We've not looked at plus or minus, so we've not, we have not done anything around. Accommodating for some of the train, changes that we know are, will just naturally happen. We feel as good as we've ever felt about our, our district placements, but as you know, and we had it happen this year. We can have a move-in, we can have a change of placement, so there's a lot that's always fluid. And I think that, like you have done in previous years, you, like you, we, we'd be talking about the FY twenty seven budget right through March and probably right up to. The town meeting, this is the exercise of the state of the town committee. And we appreciate the fact that they've taken this on as an effort to try to support an override, which in our view, my view. We really need, we need a budget reset, and that's how I like to, to think about it, and. Because what's, what's happening to us is we've depleted our, our reserves, right? We are now incurring expenses that we never really adjusted for, from an inflation standpoint, since we left COVID. If athletics is a good example, we've not increased that athletics budget by much more than two or three percent, some years, we held it completely flat. So we are artificially, we have a structural deficit from the standpoint of the programs that we're running, not new programs. The programs that we're running, that we had been really kind of getting through the fiscal years with some funding that, that we now don't have. Anymore, and it was the right thing to do then, I, I think that we managed ourselves very well through this period of time. But what's happened is now we have programs that we've been supporting that don't have the funding. In the operating budget, because we had, we have found the last two, several years, different ways to fund it. So, from my perspective, the FY twenty seven is a critical year to reset our base, so that we are. Getting a budget that actually funds properly what we are currently doing. That we're not relying so heavily on reserves that, and in fact, in some cases, no longer there. So, this is, again, the state of the town model, we've been, we're modeling it, we are modeling it five percent currently. This is what we're presenting tomorrow, and then you'll see as we look at the priorities, where we've landed on some of the priorities, which also includes. Some funding to get us to a, what we consider to be the, a better level, level services number for FY twenty seven, given everything I just said.
Ms. Bergstrom?
So I guess, Dr. Hackett, where my questions around the modeling are, and maybe this is what Mr. Hopcroft was thinking of as well. Is that if we're resetting our base in FY twenty seven with a, and pardon me, I've got this cold, so I.
I think we all do, either getting it, have it, or getting over it.
Yeah, so I. I'm concerned about the four percent in FY twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty. Because if we are resetting our base, and if we are talking about, as Mr. Bernani was speaking of, a large override. That would then meet some of the needs that we have, our FY twenty eight projection is only three million over FY twenty seven. So I just want to make sure that when we're thinking about these projections, that we're going to be able to sustain what we're building. And I understand this is just level services, but if we are adding teachers and we are adding program in FY twenty seven. I'm concerned that three million dollars with a new contract and with. And then especially looking at FY twenty nine, thirty, where a new contract will be negotiated after a large override. That we are not accounting for enough growth.
Great question, and let me take a little bit of a stab at it, so. We cannot predict much beyond the end of today, right, so these are the best. This is our best thinking with the information we have currently. FY twenty seven is the issue. Separate and apart from the override, separate and apart from the positions we're going to be talking about for an override, the essential services budget that we're going to be presenting to you. FY twenty seven is the issue, if we do not reset our base, in other words, if we don't bring our budget up. In the areas that we have been able to float funds from other sources to fund what we're doing, we are going to have to make reductions. Once that base has been, been reset, we'll be kind of, we will be in a much better position moving forward. And I can tell you, obviously, we're making assumptions on FY twenty eight with the, with unit A in particular. And some other assumptions that we're making, but. If those assumptions track. We have, we feel, we feel comfortable in the FY twenty eight projection of four percent. To your point, once we go into FY twenty nine and thirty, we not have contracts with any of our units at that point. And there's really no way to predict where those contracts are going to land, so it's. From my perspective, it's no different than what we have always had to deal with, we've never been able to. And I understand the question is, is, which is a very good one, about how do we, how do we protect ourselves against in, in, in cost increases? Over the coming years, if we're gonna do the override, we want to, we want to do what we say we're gonna do. With the additions and the program enhancements that we're talking about, what we don't want to have happen is get in a situation where we can't do those program enhancements. And say, do what we say we're gonna do, because we have to cover costs elsewhere in our budget. Primarily driven by contracts and, and other, and other things that are not as predictable, but I would just submit. That I don't think there's any real way to protect against that, and short of us saying. We need another three million dollars to count for some kind of escalation that we're gonna see over the next three years. We can't really tell you what we're gonna use that money for, but just trust us, we'll, we'll use it well. There's just no way to do it, so I, I think at some point, we have to have a number, right, for this process. We've developed that number, I, I don't think it's unreasonable for the school budget to have a target over twenty eight, twenty nine. And thirty of four percent, I really don't, at some point, we have to have a target to work for, are we always gonna get there? Who knows, I mean, the, the state may cut circuit breaker funding, and all of a sudden, we gotta bring in. Four, five hundred thousand dollars into the operating budget, because the circuit breaker is not fully funded, there's so much unpredictable. As you know, you've been doing this, all of you, a long time, there's a lot of unpredictability, but that's always been the case. So I don't know if that's, that's the best answer that I can provide.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Okay, I, I have a, a couple of questions, the first is sort of a foundational question. I'm just making sure I understand what I'm looking at, is this? What the state of the town people would like us to achieve, or is this what we are presenting to the state of the town that we think is reasonable?
This is the state of the town model, and these are the numbers that we have projected to.
This is the, so this is actually a combination of the two, the, the four percent is the guidance that we've received. From what's going into the model to help select calculate the final model, the final number, right, to put on the ballot. And, but FY twenty seven, as Dr. Hackett explained, it's not four percent, it's five percent, why is it five percent? And it's for all of the reasons he stated regarding using that as an opportunity to reset the base, so we can hit that four percent going forward.
Okay, because it, it strikes me that there's a piece of this, that as much as, as we'd like it to fit into a certain number. Which is really wonderful, and, and, and I share that desire. It is not discretionary, is, is, are, are things that, you know, depend on who shows up, what their needs are. And, and so I'm assuming that we're building in all these models, you know, all of the non-discretionary things. First, and then. Then there's the escalation that we talked about, we don't know how much things will grow year over year, and so we can make some assumptions on that. And then there's just, just so much ambiguity, trying to do something, you know, ten months, not to, not to mention multiple years out, but. But what I think I'm hearing here is that, Dr. Hackett, you're comfortable with. The twenty seven numbers based on our best belief on who's gonna come in, that this is gonna be sufficient. And then, after that, maybe we're, we're being more hopeful that we can hit the number that. The state of the town wants us to hit. Or, what's, what's your level of, of confidence in, in that, I guess?
So.
And I'll just, just, just let me finish, one, one thing just to say is. It, it feels like. We're sort of wishing a certain number, and then, you know, I, I don't want to sort of. Squeeze things that aren't squeezable to get to a number and set us up in a position where we're gonna fail.
Agreed, I don't think any of us want that, what I would say is, and I. I have been in other places where, and you have had times here where you have had to make reductions to your budget, right? You know, some of you lived through some, the economic downturns where things were not good and reductions had to be made. I lived through that here, I lived through it in prior, in, in Maine, you know, we, we are part of the economic cycle. And we never really know exactly what our revenue picture is gonna look like, what, what we're doing right now is we're saying. Thank you to the state of the town, thank you to the select board for going through this process, thank you for trying to, for recognizing that an override is needed. They're trying to get to a number, because at some point, they've got to get to a number that they're gonna bring to voters, right, if they're gonna bring anything at all. And it can't be a hundred billion dollars, so what is that number going to be? It has to be something that I think people feel comfortable with, as comfortable as they can with a forecasting model. That is based, is, is based on what we currently know. And what we think is reasonable, and understanding that it can fall apart quickly. I mean, it, it, it can, but what it does do, and as we go to the next slide, now I'm just gonna stay on. FY twenty seven for a second and be very super clear, FY twenty seven projection does not hit our level services number. It is not enough money for level services, we have carried additional money in the request as part of the override. For FY twenty seven to get us to level services, which is that, part of that adjustment to the base, right? So, the five percent doesn't get us there, we've carried it into the override. If we go into the override, and if it does not pass, you're gonna be having the same conversations between now and town meeting that you always have. Right, I mean, what is the number, what going to be that, that you're going to bring to town meeting? And that could involve cuts, it could involve hard decisions, it could involve, hopefully, you know. Thankfully, the override passes, and now we have an opportunity to really enhance our programs based on the priorities that we've identified. I feel only as comfortable as, I mean, you know, I'm not Nostradamus and I'm not Warren Buffett, so I feel as comfortable with. Working, I feel comfortable that we are working within a model that I do not think is unreasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have a target. Once we reset the base, it has not been reasonable to work within a target, which I think some have tried to force us to do. When we are already underbudgeted in the operating budget to cover our year-over-year expenses, and that has been true for several years. So, I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Hopcroft, I can't do much better than that, but let me, let me go ahead and mute.
Can I just, can I just add on to what Dr. Hackett said? This is, I know it says state of the town model, I know it says state of the town model, but this is level services. Because the state of the model, the state of the town model includes this number, plus all of the essentials. That we're going to show in the following slides.
Right, I guess that's the part that concerns me, Ms. Menyargi, I don't think it.
It does include, it's level services.
Yes.
Well, that's what's going in the model, right, so it's not, the model is not just looking at level services, it's looking at multiple scenarios. And one of them is level services plus everything that we're gonna talk about in the following slides.
But even without that, that may not be enough to account for once we enter a new contract negotiation.
It may not be, Ms. Bergstrom, but I mean, what, what is the alternative, right? Because we still have to, the, the select board has to get to a number that they're gonna bring to voters, and. It's, this is based on a model, and, and it was said earlier tonight, it's, it's based on relatively kind of the same modeling that was done for the previous. Override, which also was not meant to last as long as it did, it lasted in, in part because of COVID. And, and some funding that came in to help get through, but, and you and I have had this conversation, I mean, I, I'm not sure that everything. That the district wanted to achieve through that override was actually achieved for a variety of reasons, and we're. That the district wanted to achieve through that override was actually achieved for a variety of reasons and, um, we're. We want to insulate ourselves as best we can from that happening. So we're still a long ways away from getting, we're not asking you to vote anything this evening. We're, we're, what we're presenting to you is our best, absolute best projections and estimates. With all the variables and things that we know that are not known and those things that we don't even know aren't, aren't known. Within this model. So as Miss Mynarji already said, um, this is level services. When we look at the essential services or the priorities, you will see what we're, what we're looking to do for F Y twenty seven, just as part of reestablishing that base. So maybe if we could. No, not, not that, not backwards, Andrew, please.
I think he was doing that to you the other day, too.
He was. No, he's been messing around with me.
No, that, that's the category. This is essential services now.
Got it.
A, a, as we move forward though, can, can I just, just ask in, in clarifying, uh, just on my last question though, that, that last slide, you don't have to go back to it, but. You're understanding all the ambiguity and the Nostradamus and all that kinda stuff, um, assuming that you had a crystal ball and, and what your assumptions are true. With that five percent, um, we can meet our, our legal obligations to service all these kids, all the special ed kids. We're not gonna roll back on literacy and, and we're gonna continue at least what we did last year. Hence the definition of level services.
We didn't, we didn't roll out literacy, so that's, that's.
We made some investments. You're right, there's more to do. Yeah, okay.
Let, let's walk through this, Mister Hopcroft, and, um, I'll, hopefully you'll forget your question. I won't have to come back to it, but if you remember, then I'll be able to come back to it.
Okay, we're all of new questions. Okay, go ahead.
Miss Mynarji, wanna take it?
Oh, sure. Okay, so what we were looking at before is level services, I'm sorry, yes, level services plus. A scenario in the model includes all of the expenses that we're going to detail here. And when Dr. Hackett says we're resetting the base, there are unanticipated, un, unbudgeted expenditures that we. Realize now in twenty six that we need to do again in twenty seven, that very first line substitutes and E S Ps. Is that effort, is part of that effort, at least on the personnel side. And there's another bit that we'll talk about when we look at all the other expenses. Um, so the, the items that we've seen here, this was presented on our, at our September eleventh meeting, I believe that was. Um, it's the same priorities that we looked at, looking at literacy specialists, mathematics specialists, the, the. Two point five for elementary plus one for, um, for secondary. McCall schedule, the, the music teachers that help us, um, provide more flexibility in that schedule for our students. The, uh, high school electives, um, oh, and core curriculum, the core, to making. More core curriculum sections available because there are students now that can access even core curriculum sections. To take that into account, expanding world languages, S C L specialist for middle and high. We don't have any currently. I was surprised to, to learn about that. Um, adaptive P implementation and six to twelve mathematics. Specialist as part of a phased approach similar to what we did for elementary. Um, so Dr. Hackett, I just, wait, if, I'm sorry, if you can go back. Mister, yeah, thank you. Ooh, just as I noticed, the elementary math specialist. Um, we call that three point five, but I think that includes. Middle.
So we actually, um, we've been, this, some of what you're seeing has changed from last time you saw it. Partly we bought from internal feedback, um, as well as actually, for example, as, as early as last night, we attended the PISC meeting. Um, and there were some good conversation, there was some great conversation at the PISC meeting, uh, some questions around, uh, some of this and, uh, part of what. One of the things that we walked away with was, um, that we, we wanna have certainly one full-time math specialist in each of our elementary schools. Uh, but we also want to provide the opportunity and the flexibility to have one that we would basically start off as being what we call. What we're calling, for lack of a better term, district. And I think someone said it really well last night at PISC. That the point fives this year in the buildings have really, the, the goal of that was to, for those people in those positions. To start to understand what are the needs, what does this position really look like? Well, how do we provide the support? So as we move forward, um, we are, we are looking to carry, um, the extra district position. So that we can help support, um, wherever that need might be. There's, there may be, um. And this has been, this has been hard because we have not been well resourced, uh, as we've talked about. Um, in some of the, in some areas around supporting kids and. Um, we could be overshooting a little bit with some of this, but we don't know, right? So, um, this is our best prioritization at this point, based on the feedback that we've heard from, uh, months of feedback. Both from you and from staff, uh, internally and also from parents.
Okay, and. Sorry, anyone else? Okay, so can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so F Y essential services. The first two items, elementary literacy, where's the implementation? So similar to what we did for the literacy pilot. Um, we discussed pulling them as a separate article to town meeting, similar to what we did again this year for the pilot. So the materials that for these one-time costs, pulling them out as a separate article, not including them in the operating budget. That's why the projected cost is blank. Um, going down athletics, special education, transportation, in and out of district edu, uh, transportation, general ed transportation. Um, those items similar to E S Ps and. Um, substitutes and, uh, when we were talking about personnel for essential services. These are also services that were unbudgeted in F Y, F Y twenty six and we absolutely need an F Y twenty seven. And, uh, uh, like we also mentioned, in athletics, we haven't spent any. We haven't, uh, put any dollars in those funds for, for some time and those reserves have been depleted. Um, and then the rest of these priorities are again similar to the essentials that we've, we've been looking at. I don't think we've made any changes here. Doctor Hackett or Andrew, if you can recall.
Some of the amounts might be a little bit different, but no, these are the, these should look very familiar.
Oh, and, uh, I'm sorry, we did change the district transportation for field trips after, um, some feedback from PISC. Okay. All right. F Y twenty eight, so. Uh, I don't think we made any changes to F Y twenty eight, other than, um. Removing the elementary pilot similar to what we did for literacy. So that's why the dollar is zeroed out. Any question? And then F Y twenty nine, S C L, like, as part of a four-year. Um, implementation, so there are two in middle and two in high. We continue that effort and then we also introduce the theater program review. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the theater program review is in twenty eight and then program implementation is, is here in twenty nine. Oh, another thing that I, at PISC yesterday, if you could go back, yes, perfect. In addition to them, they were very excited about the buses and I don't, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you appreciate that. This is a team of parents that dedicate an entire year to help finance field trips. Um, again, this is, this happens during the school day, it's based, it's curriculum based and, um, we can't exclude any students. So this has fallen on parent organizations to fundraise and support those activities. This is our hope to bring that back into the budget. Um, so that way, especially in our five elementary schools, all five have a similar experience. Um, addressing that equity concern. Similar to that, classroom instructional materials, also a big hit with the P T Os last night. Rave reviews because in addition to doing that, they support each classroom. With a class fund, as I'm sure many of you have experienced, uh, and those class funds bring in essential material for the classrooms. Um, and in addition, they're never enough. Teachers always have to go and shop on their own. But similar to field trips, we hope that even within a building, there can be variability between how much, um, support a classroom gets. For raising funds for these materials, so. Um, this was, uh, really resonated with, with, uh, the parent community as a way to help, um. Not only with the time and resources that go into it, but again, equity across the five. Next, and here we are in F Y thirty. As we go further and further out, I know Tom and, and Michelle, this is. Like, we have these same conversations on, in capital planning, where what happens if a truck breaks, right? There are always all of these, um, we have a capital plan, but for sure, a truck is gonna break along the way. Similarly, we experience that because we have over four thousand students and so many moving variables and teachers that are moving columns and lanes. Um, so I, I agree that the further we go out, it's, it's difficult to predict.
Yeah, I, I, my concern, I, I have that concern too, but, uh, my concern, my first concern was, you know, were we meeting the basic legal obligations? Before we got to the escalations and, and the, the things that we thought were pretty essential. Um, is this deck? Could, could we put this deck in the folder or somewhere, just, just, I. I like to be able to look through it back and forth while we're doing this stuff and it's, it's kinda hard cuz I can't remember. Cuz I wasn't at the subcommittee.
Yeah.
What was on the last page?
Well, we, we paid a lot of adjustments, Mister Hopcroft, up until the point of this meeting, so we can get, what you're looking at right now is, you know, you know. Not, not that old, so.
I can see there's, I can see there's a lot of work in here and I appreciate the work that you guys have done and it does help it, we get a bigger sense of it. I think what you're asking is the five percent and then four percent, four percent, four percent, and then there's four and a half million. Is that total from the override spread out over those five years?
So it's the total of F Y twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty. Um, for essential services, that's right. So if we, if you.
Sorry, if I looked at the bottom of each of the slides that showed twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, those numbers add up to the four and a half million. Yeah, okay. That, that's where it's hard without being able to flip back and forth to.
No, yeah, 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 no, I, yeah, that's true. That's a good point.
And is that represented on this slide?
That, these are just the, yeah, so you would have to add, um, everything for personnel, essential services across twenty seven to thirty. And other expenses, essential services, twenty seven to thirty, and that gets you to the four point five. So if this were Excel and you highlighted those two rows, you'd get.
Got it. So the. So the first line, that, that's the state of the town model, which is.
That's level services.
Our best guess at what level services might be. And then the next line is, are these additional things that we voted on before?
And also our, our best guess even for those, that's right, that's right, yes, even our best guess just for those.
Okay, it makes sense. All right.
Okay, so that's, that's the state of the town presentation for tomorrow, right? Mister Marin, is that another, is there another slide after that?
Can you go back to the last slide, Doctor Hackett? Just for a minute.
Mister Marin.
So in F Y twenty seven, that one point seven eight eight million represents twenty two F T E, correct?
Yes.
I guess what I'm not seeing or where I'm wondering where it is in the F Y twenty eight projection, Doctor Hackett. Is the, so those will be new F T E in twenty seven. I'm looking for the, um, where the number is that accounts for keeping that staff on. In addition to all the rest of the staff.
The number, the number would be in the, the essential services budget, so. Once those, if those positions are put into F Y twenty seven, F Y twenty eight, as we, the plan shows. Once that money is available and made available to our budget, then it will be rolled in, uh, to our base. So there, that's not one-time money, as you know, the, whatever amount of money we get lives with us for. Forever theoretically. So this, what you're looking at, if, but it's not built in. We've not built these positions into F Y twenty eight, twenty nine and thirty because we don't have the positions yet.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yes, yeah.
So those numbers don't account for that.
Those numbers only account for rolling forward, um, what we currently have, uh, in F Y twenty seven.
Okay, thank you.
Off of the F Y twenty seven number, just to be clear, that you're looking at, that five percent.
Can you keep that up for just a second? I'm sorry. Uh, cuz I, I think Miss Bergstrom's, I'm understanding what you're saying. If you're showing this slide, uh, you're gonna be underreporting. If, if the seventy one million in twenty eight isn't escalating to sixty seven million. Because we don't technically have it yet, then wouldn't we be underreporting each year what the? I, I get that the state of the town model doesn't include the essential services, but when you put it on a chart like this, that does include the essential services. It seems we ought to have a modified state of the town model that shows, cuz, cuz someone might look at this and think, oh, this is the, the whole ask. And.
Well, this, this would be the whole ask.
But, well, well, so then maybe I misunderstood what you said. So the seventy one million.
I think I misunderstood what slide I was looking at candidly. So the, the, the initial slide of the five percent, four percent, four percent, four percent. Does not build these positions in. This does not build anything in. The slide, this slide that we're looking at at the end is the adjusted budget based on those positions being in the budget.
Okay, good. So, so you've done what Miss Bergstrom had asked. Where, where this one says sixty eight million, um, on that last slide, you've escalated it based on the. The essential.
Correct.
Back to the last slide?
What we didn't do is put the percentage of these budgets down here, but clearly it's, those are more than four percent because we are. Increasing the budget as a result of the override.
Right, on the first slide, uh, F Y twenty nine is seventy one million.
Right.
That's, that, that's what I guess what I'm asking. This slide doesn't represent our budget at all.
This slide is the state of the town model, simply applying the five percent to F Y twenty seven, which is five percent more than F Y twenty six. Right, that's all that math is.
Right, no, I get that, but we shouldn't be modeling an override based on this slide.
We are not modeling the override based on this slide. We're modeling the override based on the following slides. That shows what will go into the essential services budget if the override were to be successful.
So is this the slide that if the override is not successful?
This is level services. So if they, if, if the override is unsuccessful, we still have to go to town meeting. They still have to vote on our budget. We can put whatever we want in front of them. It could be level services, it could be austerity, it could be a growth scenario regardless. That's still on, on us. The, how town meeting supports that, I think is heavily dependent on the success of an override.
Yeah, I guess I'm just not as, as clear on what. What the, what the utility of the slide is, well, and what the utility of it is. Cuz we voted a bunch of things that aren't.
Can I actually, because we need a number, Tom, like the state of the town committee is working off a mo, they have to model something.
Well, right, but after our last slide. If we're modeling an override, it should be based on the last slide.
But, but it's the starting point of the override. So when they're modeling four, actually, we're at five percent, they're modeling four percent, right? That four percent is essentially what they're saying is, we're gonna assume a, an inflationary rate of four percent year over year. On the budget. With that inflationary increase. How much money is that gonna cost over the course of an override, right? There's that dollar figure that it does nothing other than rolls us forward. Based on that assumption. Then, how much money are we, we want this override to be, what's gonna be reasonable? And then that's when we build in the priorities. So they're essentially saying, we're, we're making an assumption on year-over-year growth. And then on top of that year-over-year growth, cuz that's a number, then what is it that, um, we're gonna add as part of the override?
Right, but our total ask is more than four and a half million. Our adds are four and a half million. Our total ask could be greater than that.
Right, and that's built into the model.
And where is that number?
In the, in the, well, it's built into, they're, they're building into the model, that is the four percent year over year.
But go back. These are the assumptions that we're, we're, with the assumptions that we're feeding them, basically are, you know, they have that four percent. Then they're gonna look at budget priorities and they're gonna say four plus percent plus all of these dollar number, dollar figures that schools gave me. Right, that's one of the scenarios.
Can we go back to the last slide for a minute?
I appreciate you trying to keep that slide off, Andrew, I really do. You're working hard, but.
Sorry, I was just.
Uh, that slide's broken, doesn't work anymore.
Yeah, technology issue. So, sorry.
So in this budget, what is the percentage year over year in the last line? From F Y twenty seven to F Y thirty?
Twenty seven to thirty?
Yeah.
Well, seven hundred and seventy thousand would be a percent, right?
I mean, it's ten million.
It's four million.
This is a ten million dollar ask through FY thirty for the schools alone, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So the. Uh, yeah, it's like year over year, so you're at twenty seven, this is. Nine point seven three, twenty eight is five point zero five, twenty nine is four point two seven, thirty is four point one six.
I, I, not to point out the obvious, but I would just remind the committee that absent this effort. We would be getting nothing more, and we'd be facing probably a six percent level services budget that may not be passable at town meeting. So I, I, I think there are a lot of assumptions that have to be built in to this modeling. Clearly, some are going to be off, and so I think. I, I understand the questions, I think they're great questions, but I, I also just understand the effort, which I think is a, is a huge effort, and I don't want to. I think we have a responsibility, we've been given the op, the opportunity to participate in this, because you as a committee can't do this on your own. So, um, I'm not going to question the modeling that's being done by the select board, um, because I, I don't know, I mean, I, I understand it, but. There, they are, they've spent a lot of time trying to figure out what this model is, is, i- if their model's wrong, then their model's wrong, but. I think their model is, is as tight as it can be, given the circumstances. So, and I also just want to remind you, don't have to remind you, but what, you also know that this is gonna, everything you just saw is going to change, right, I mean, we. These are our priorities at this point in time, something could happen four weeks from now, that we come back to you and say. We've got a shift on some of the priorities that we shared with you for X, Y and Z, let us present that to you and, and talk about that with you, I mean, at some point. And I'm not even sure when that is, well, when. We are getting toward the ballot vote on an override, the list has to be pretty solid, right, I mean, there can't be much fluctuation. But I, I, there are items in here right now that I, I think may, we may rethink. Along the way, there's some items in here that, for example, that came up last night at PIS, that. We've made a good faith effort to include because we think it's the right thing to do, but we haven't, we don't have, really have enough data at this point. To understand exactly what the need is, so that's the work we're going to continue to do, I think we've done a great job with that up to this point. But it is December fourth, and as you know, um, you, you were talking budget, um, you were taught, you've never talked budget this early, first of all. Secondly, um, you were talking budget all the way up to town meeting last year, so there's, there's a lot of work that needs, that's going to need to be done and, and, um, you know. And I think in the end, part of the conversation you're going to need to have as committee is, okay, well, what happens if the override doesn't go through? And then how are we, what are we thinking about what we would do, what do we go to town meeting with? Um, what's, what's the right number, um, that conversation has to happen regardless.
And I should, I should say, if, if in any way, um, you know, I, I seem, uh, unappreciative of either the. The state of the town folks or the members of the budget subcommittee or whatever, I'm absolutely not.
No, you don't, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that.
Well, and, and.
I was going to say that too as well, Tom.
Yeah.
But we should also be able to analyze it.
Well.
I'm not, I'm just saying.
That, that, that's fine, I, no, I understand, I didn't mean to, um, suggest that you were suggesting anything otherwise. Um, and, but there's a, you know, I also appreciate that there's a, you know, period of, of overrides that happen more frequently or less frequently over time, and, and so that drives. You know, a lot of this as well, and as Ms. Bergstrom, I think, was just alluding to there, yeah, I think it's our job to. Push and prod and poke and make sure, because the worst thing to do would be to, to put something forward that state of the town says, hey, this is a real stretch, and they, they get. You know, their arms around it and give us what we ask for, and then find that it's not actually, you know, we, we didn't calculate something that we, you know. When I saw that, I was thinking about it, should have asked that and didn't, and yeah, guys, I forgot, you know, we didn't compound this into it or something, so. Uh, so take all of our pushing and prodding with, with love and, uh, knowing it's just to, to get to the. To be the best partner we can be with the town in, in representing the needs of the schools.
I, I do, and I understand that, I didn't mean to imply anything other than that, I think part of what I tried, the point I'm really trying to make is that. You are not making a decision on the next four or five fiscal years tonight, so I, I don't want you to take, have the impression. That every single question you might have has to be answered tonight because you are, the future of the school department depends on this tonight, so. You have your normal budget cycle that will, you will continue to have, uh, we'll continue to talk about these priorities. Um, and, you know, just as early as today, with some conversations around what about the benefits package that would be going along with. With these positions and where, where is that going to get accounted for, I mean, so there's, there's a lot of work to do. I think the effort right now on the part of the, of the state of town committee is, is to get comfortable enough. With the model and where we, where we are and where they are to be able to start to move forward on the number. And, uh, maybe I'm, if I'm incorrect, uh, Tim or Stephanie, please certainly correct me.
Hand raised.
Thanks.
Waiting patiently.
Thanks, Madam Chair, I ju, I just want to say three things, so first of all. You know, just to try and explain for those that have not been, um, at the weeks of state of the town meetings. So that I, I've actually, I've seen the model, I've reviewed it, it's publicly available, each of the iterations of it have been put out there for all the members of the state of the town. I'm pretty confident, just to, to your point, Mr. Hopcroft, that there's not something that's been missed yet, um. But it's, I, you know, I, I think the thing that I appreciate the most about it is that it's been done in a stepwise fashion, so. The idea is that we're sort of building off a base of how much additional revenue the town is able to generate through. Um, both the, the growth in, in property, um, values as well as the two and a half percent. Per year, um, limit that we have under Prop two and a half, so that's sort of the, think of it as, as that being the sort of base of the, the model. Um, the next thing after that, um, was really, uh, an attempt to understand, you know, if nothing changed. Um, what, what would that cost, um, sort of moving forward for the next three fiscal years? Um, then layered on top of that, um, you know, for those of us that. Were on WorkStream One, which is the one that went out and, and tried to get, um, as, as much, as precise information as possible from each of the. Operating departments, not just, um, in the school department, but also on the, the town side. And I participated, for example, in one of those conversations with the, the DPW. Um, and, you know, just to sort of understand in an ideal scenario, what are the things that. Um, beyond that, that level services that is just porting over what we're doing now, what are the, the sort of things that need to happen and what are the things that. Um, would be, be nice, um, to happen? Um, and that's what Select Board did on, on Monday night is to start going through the process of taking the information they've received from. Excuse me, I'm also suffering with the plague, um, the operating departments on, on the town side, the municipal side. Um, to sort of see what, what the, there was an appetite to include, um, in, in the calculations as well. Again, a, a, all sort of building up towards, um, outputting a, a number, um, for discussion, and obviously it's the sole purview of the Select Board to, to make the decision about what the number that goes forward to voters is. So, that, that's the first thing I'll say, the second thing I'll say is, you know, I, I think there are. O- obviously, we are doing our best and I want to give a lot of kudos to, to Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin in particular, and, and to Ms. Menyarji, who's been. Really working on, um, more of the number side, whereas I've been kind of working. Um, with Ms. Bolanasa on the, you know, sort of programmatic side and sort of understanding the, the higher level, um, programmatic implications of things. Um, you know, I, I think there's been a lot of work that's done to try and reduce as much uncertainty as possible in this kind of a modeling exercise. Obviously, we have no idea what negotiations for contracts are going to look like. Um, but it doesn't in any way tie our hands in terms of making decisions moving forward if, if information changes, so. Um, in the event that there were an exogenous shock like COVID happening, or. If there's, you know, a massive increase in some, one of the input variables to, to putting our budget together every year. We can choose to make a different set of decisions, um, with the amount of money that's allocated to us by, by town meeting, um, moving forward, I think this is just our sort of hopeful. Um, estimation of what we'd like to see moving forward to, to close some of those structural gaps that, that Dr. Hackett quite eloquently talked about. Um, and then the third thing I'm going to say is, you know, we have some other levers. That we will want to continue to discuss, and it's part, part of something that we've, you know, sort of looked at through our visioning process over, over the summer. Um, you know, there, there may be things that we choose to do in the future as a school committee, which we have the, the, the responsibility to sort of take some of those. Issues on that could sort of change costs as well. Um, and so, you know, obviously, within the purview of, of what we've been able to do during this exercise, we're going to get to the best numbers we have, but. You know, it may be that, that some of the, the assumptions change because of a, a changing decision that, that we make as a committee moving forward, so. You know, if, if there is a, a material change in the amount of money that, that's available. We certainly have, have the opportunity, I think, through a few levers, to make some different decisions as a committee moving forward to try and keep closer to, you know, the overall. Number, um, that we've gotten to, because really, the whole point of a Prop two and a half override. You know, Prop two and a half didn't say that you couldn't collect more than that amount of revenue, it just meant that you had to go and ask the voters for, for, uh, above that, that level of revenue. Um, and so I think what, you know, the process has, has yielded so far is our best guess. About, you know, what sort of would happen over a three, maybe four year period, um, sort of keeping, in keeping with what Winchester's done before. Um, but obviously, we know there are going to be some changes and, and there are some factors that are within our control as a committee as well that. We could potentially change and moving forward, um, also, so. Thank you to all of you for, you know, sort of your, your participation, the conversation. But especially to, to those who've been doing the work, because I know it's, it's really super hard, happy to talk to, um, anybody about this, um, but it's. You know, I think the modeling that's been done is, is really solid.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Um, and I just want to echo Mr. Hopcroft's reply, having, um, done this work for the last override. I know what a commitment and a, um, and how much time it takes and collaboration among. Town departments and school departments and especially the ability to create multiple, um, uh, multiple budgets, which are, we don't generally ask. Our school department to have to do in one year, and given that we're talking about structural deficits, that's one right there that we have, so. Um, we just don't have a wide, a deep, a deep bench to be able to, um, dedicate someone to just being an override budget planner, so. Thank you, Mr. Marin, for, in particular, for all the work that you continue to do on that as well. Um, and also having been part of the last override, you know, I, what I just want to say, my cautionary tale is that. This is the exact conversation we had with the last override, that we needed to cover structural deficits. That we were trying to reset our level services budget and, um. Were it not for ESER funding and COVID, the last override would not have lasted as long as it has. So, um, I think that, um, please also, uh, Ms. Menyarji and, um, Mr. And Dr. Matthews have been a little bit closer to this, um, you'll have to, uh, be patient with us and understand our questions and our. Um, our interest in making sure that we do. Maintain the funding that we are looking for and that there is a way that we will be able to. Um, sort of put our arms around anything that we move forward with, and we're promising teachers and community as part of this override. When we look out at FY twenty nine and thirty and being able to maintain the, um, over thirty FTE that we're talking about adding, the programming we're talking about adding. Um, there is going to have to be some conversation moving forward with, um, state of the town committee about how. Uh, if we raise these funds, if we are good enough partners with our community to have an override passed. That we as a town are able to continue to commit those funds because, um, as it happened before. The funds did not all go as to the point that they were intended, or we would not still be in the position that we are today. So, um, I just want to make really sure and really clear that we are able to. Maintain what we build, because the worst outcome I could think would be to. Reset our base budget and to build new programming, only to have to. Begin to dismantle that programming, raise class sizes, have other outcomes down the line that are unintended outcomes of doing those things. Um, so, and Mr. Matthews, I would have happily attended any state of the town meeting, but nine o'clock on a Friday morning is. Not the most speaking of accessible, accessible time for everyone in the community to, to attend those meetings, so, um. I appreciate those people that could do that, but just not able to make that time.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be quick and hopefully you can't hear the dog barking behind me, um. Uh, first, uh, you know, I, I really appreciate Ms. Bergstrom's just, her whole perspective and the lessons learned, um, so we make sure to carry those forward. Um, and, and I also, uh, Dr. Matthews really, uh, you know, appreciated, uh, your remarks and, and I, I wanted to again reiterate that. Uh, I have great confidence in the team and I, I'm really, um, thankful for all the work that's being done, um, but as. As much confidence as I have, you know, I still have the responsibility to understand it and ask questions and probe, so. Um, yeah, I, and, and I'm not, that's not a critique or anything, but just, just to help understand where I'm coming from when I'm, when I'm asking these questions, um. You know, I, 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 I hope that every question I ask has an answer and, and, you know, I'm sure you guys have actually run all these things down, I have no doubt, but I still. Spare with me while, while I make sure I bring myself, because, you know, much like Ms. Bergstrom, you know, I have conflict, um, oftentimes during these meetings. Um, but I will try to be at, at some of the others, so thank you.
Thank you so much. And if there are no further questions, then thank you so much to, um, Mr. Marin for all your work and Dr. Hackett. Dr. Matthews, Ms. Menyarji, Ms. Bergstrom. Um, appreciate all of your help and questions, Mr. Hopcroft too. Um, with that. We will move on to, um, consideration of policy JKAA, the restraint policy. This is the second time that we will be seeing this policy, we first visited it on, um, at our November twentieth meeting. Um, and this is, we have. Previously, or we had previously approved an update to the JKAA restraint policy, but then the state had come back. With a much more, with much more specific requests about what they would like to be included in the policy. Um, our, our school council has reviewed the, um. Draft of the JKAA restraint policy and offered their own input, um, so we bring this back to you today for a second reading. End of it.
Um, in, in order to, to, we can always have discussion, but I'm happy to, to move, um, that the committee approves. Um, the updated policy JKAA restraint policy, um, for, uh. Uh, as presented in the packet tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion for Dr. Hackett? Otherwise, um, all in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Ms. Menyarji?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous for, um, the updated JKAA restraint policy. Uh, next we'll have a first reading of policy IKFE, the competency determination. Uh, this came to the policy subcommittee today, actually. For a first reading and the policy subcommittee had recommended that it be, uh, moved forward to school committee, but it was already on our agenda. Um, and the competency determin, with respect to the competency determination, um, Dr. Alan Emma will be walking us through this. And just as some background, uh, with the passage of question two, say, um, in the state. That, um, in, MCAS will no longer be a requirement for graduation, all districts in the state are, have been required to submit their competency determination. And to the Department of Elementary and, Elementary and Secondary Education. And this has to be submitted by December thirty first this year, so we are bringing this first look to you.
Thank you, so I'll, I'll give kind of the high level and then I'll talk a little bit of details here and then happy to answer any questions. Um, that anyone has, so, um, we were here last year talking about this topic as well, um. It, when the, uh, as Ms. Bolanasa said, like when the vote passed for question two, then. What the state realized is we needed to put something else in place, um, there are two things that determine students' graduation. It's meeting the local requirements and then meeting the state requirements, and the state requirements previously were the high-stake MCAS test. Um, at the high school level, um, and when that, uh, vote was passed, uh, there was still. Uh, statutes around meeting the competency determination, which is set at the state level, so.
So, um, uh, last year kind of in that scramble, their um, their bar was pretty low. Around expectations for what districts did in kind of that short timeline. Um, and so we came to you with a one year um, expectation of what we need to shift to. Now we are in the position that um, we need, uh, as they are going through their process to determine what the competency determination is. So I just want to be clear, um, theoretically after this year, it is out of our hands at local levels to determine these. And these will be determined um, at the state level and they currently, you may have seen in the news this week. Um, they've released some preliminary findings of the work that they're doing and what they're looking to do for the future. Um, which includes, and of course exams that would be administered by the state in the same way that MCAS has been administered. Um, and their interpretation of the uh, vote on question two. Was that the uh, population of Massachusetts did not want this to be a high stakes test. That um, got in the way of students graduating. But um, not that the voters were necessarily opposed to um, having the testing itself. Um, so they are looking to for putting into place potentially for next year, although they do not have a set timeline yet. Um, that there will be kind of what I'm calling, these are not their words, like mini MCAS. That are taken at the end of courses that are courses that they've decided, that the test will be taken at the end of. And it will be administered much like it is now through a third party, Pearson or some other assessment vendor that they will contract with. And that will be one part of the algorithm that determines if students have met, met the state competency determination. Um, and then they are also talking about other parts of the algorithm like capstones or portfolios. So all of that is yet to come, but just to let you know what's on the horizon. We were tasked with coming up with a uh, a competency determination that would be in effect for one year, for next year. Um, while they continue to work through their process and they are anticipating they will be announcing the expectations. Um, this coming June, June of twenty six. Um, but they have not yet determined what their timeline will be for implementation. So all of that is to come, um, and what you have in front of you is what we are proposing at the local level. Be our competency determination um, for going into next year. What our expectations were around that this year was to step up from what we had done last year. But certainly not an expectation that we're putting in place uh, like, like the test that they're talking about at the end of course determination. So what we are recommending, um, and, and this was a good discussion we had today in policy subcommittee. All of our local graduation requirements that are in our student handbook and our program of studies. All of those would still remain as part of our graduation requirements. And in addition to that, students would need to meet instead of MCAS, this competency determination. Which is um, boils down to basically, if you look on kind of the right side of the screen, those bullets there. We have the courses that they would need to pass to meet this. And then in addition to that, and this is what is new this year, is um, the, the practice is not new. But it's new as part of the competency determination. We do um, performance-based assessments in all of our high school courses. There are two common performance-based assessments, all students in ninth grade English take these two common assessments. Um, so we added as the additional layer in our proposal that they would need to, uh, they would need to show competency. On at least one of those two performance-based assessments in the years that we have laid out here. Uh, two years of high school English, two years of high school math. Um, one thing that is a little tricky, just to put on your radar, coming attractions. Um, they have been very clear for this year at least, that the math expectations need to be met at high school. Even though we have different levels of math, starting in seventh grade. Um, and all of that could shift in the future, because one of the courses they're talking about being the foundation. That they will expect potentially is around Algebra I, so some students have that in the middle school. So we're not sure how that will all play out on a local level at this time. But for next year, we are recommending um, two of the high school math courses. Um, and then uh, two, uh, one, one year with the science, but it has to fall in those specific courses we have listed. That is uh, the state guidelines, biology, physics, chemistry, or tech engineering. And then beginning with the class of twenty twenty seven, um, a US history course, uh, performance-based assessment. So, those are our recommendations to simultaneously go along with our current local requirements. These would be our additional requirements for next year, some of which are clearly in overlap, such as the number of courses. You know, they need to pass their English courses, et cetera. So the first set of bullets align with our local requirements and the second set of bullets are what we have done to. Do the additional step that the state has asked that we um, kind of raise the expectations from our current, this year. One-year competency determination into our next year. I hope I didn't make that muddier in my explanation, but happy to take any questions or walk through any of the pieces of this.
I, I don't want to step on Mr. Hopcroft's toes, but I just do want to say, um, having been at policy subcommittee earlier. Um, thank you to Dr. Ellen Emma and the team, um, for their continued um, thoughtfulness around this. It's obviously something that, um, I think we, we joked about earlier, that this is the second time we've had to say. We're pretty sure this is not going to be in the same form it's in now next year, um, when we get to the next iteration of this. Um, but um, we, we do appreciate your, your work and thoughtfulness on bringing something cohesive um, forward for, for us to consider. So, I just wanted to, to put that out there before, um, those who didn't already get to hear this, uh, get to comment.
Thank you, it's been a great team effort. Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, thank you, um, uh, and you know, I'd, I'd echo, echo Dr. Matthews. Um, I, I actually think this is a, a wonderful framework in a, in a, so wonderful, maybe bigger picture, um, uh, coming down the road. I, I, I really like this, I hope maybe there's a way that we can share some of this approach with um, the state. And maybe they'll, they'll be informed by some of what leading districts are doing. Uh, I, I actually just had a, a clarifying question and, and, and maybe a request of um, some clarity in the language. But I, 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 I wasn't absolutely clear in the second set of bullets. Um, it says you must successfully complete at least one district-wide um, performance-based assessment in at least two years. So was it one in each of the things that are listed in the bullets? Or one of the two in each bullet, or one out of all of the bullets? Does that make sense?
Yeah, great question, so it's one for each of the bullets each year. So, and maybe we should work on kind of redrafting that in some ways. So, um, for instance, you know, if, if you didn't, uh, if you weren't successful on your, say, your performance-based assessments. In freshman year of English, it could be that you've been successful in one in sophomore year and one in junior year. And that meets the requirements. We wanted to, um, if you, if you go further down into the document, there's, you know, a lot of things that we had to put consideration into. Like students who transfer into, you know, our district. If they come in sophomore or junior year, you know, they may not have had some kind of performance-based assessment in their previous district. Um, so we wanted to be as flexible as we could be for those situations. Um, like our multilingual students often who come in without these pieces or just other districts. Um, so this allows some flexibility and I, and I didn't mention, so I'm glad you brought this up. Later you see in our proposed policy that um, there's also a waiver process. Because there will be students where there are, if you transfer, you move into Winchester in your senior year. Like you won't have been able to meet all of these pieces, um, simply because you're not taking two years of English with us or two years of math. So, it's, it's one um, in each of the years that are listed.
Yeah, so, so I, and I do appreciate that extra point about the flexibility and about students transferring and um, you know, and, and I might just ask, you know, uh. Yes, to, 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 as you finalize this, just to um, uh, i- if you can adjust the language just slightly to make that really clear.
Yep.
But I, I like the approach.
Thank you, happy to adjust. Ms. Bergstrom?
Here, I'm mute.
I'm on two screens here, sorry. Um, I'd just like to echo uh, Mr. Hopcroft's, uh, hope that maybe we and similar districts can share some of our approaches with the state. As they begin to think about this. And I think, um, while I echo Dr. Ellen Emma, that the voters didn't vote out any kind of testing. I um, think that uh, the messaging was pretty clear on no high stakes testing. So I'm hoping whatever the state comes up with doesn't just, um, just look like a mini MCAS, Dr. Ellen Emma. So, um, and I also um, just want to give a nod to the curriculum department at the high school. And their years of work that have gone into the performance-based assessments and developing standardized rubrics. So that this is even possible as a competency determination at this point. And the work that we are doing and some other peer districts around the state, um, I think have put us in a really good position. To be able to determine student competency in ways other than just a test or standardized test alone. Um, and just, I, I don't always make personal notes, but on a personal note on this one. Um, my sophomore son came home from college as a science and math major. And is doing performance-based assessments in his science and math college courses, as well as his friends that are in engineering programs. So, I think when we talk about the skills we need to give kids to move on to college. Um, having them show competency in performance-based assessments in high school. And learning how to manage their time and their thinking around those is a huge gift to our kids. So, thank you for being on the cutting edge of that, Dr. Ellen Emma and the curriculum department. And being ready to meet the state competency determination head-on. Thank you, yeah, I mean, huge shout-out behind the scenes, like um, how much work our teachers do around. Uh, calibrating each year where they are with their use of the rubric, do we need to adjust the rubric, where are the students? What's the student feedback to us telling us? I mean, every year, one of the things that was great and, and I, it's hard to say that out loud. But one of the things that was great about putting all the audit work together was um, really seeing all these examples. Of how our curriculum is not, you know, a lot of districts, they're on a five-year or a ten-year review cycle. It's every single summer and during the wind blocks at the high school and during the common planning times at the elementary and middle school. People are looking at these things in the moment when we're getting students' results and being able to say. Did we frame this well, did we, like, how can we change our approach or our instruction or how? So, um, yeah, it's just a huge shout-out to where everyone is with that curriculum work and how great they've been doing around that. That it allows us to say with confidence that this is a, a real authentic measure of where students are with what they can do with these skills. So, thank you.
I think it's been great that um, Winchester has been a leader in MCIEA. Um, I think Ms. Bergstrom was alluding to that. Um, and the work that the district has done with developing the PBAs over several years. And I think it's um, um, helped us to be able to be ready for this moment. Um, in figuring out uh, compet- our competency determination. So, thank you so much for all the work and the leadership.
Thank you.
You're here.
So I, I, I know we're not taking a motion on this tonight, um, but um, I know we, um, you know, we'll, we'll revisit this. But, um, again, thanks for, for all the work.
Thank you, and if anyone has anything else that, you know, you look through it again and something's not clear, we're happy to revise. So just shoot me an email or we can talk on the phone if something that, that could be clearer if we aren't, thank you.
Great, thank you, and we will bring this back on our next meeting, which will be December eighteenth.
The perfect segue, Madam Chair.
Yes, that's right.
Nice way to check off another agenda item.
I know, I was working on that. Um, future agenda items, I know that we have a lot of minutes that we will be catching up. And.
A lot of policies that we worked through this afternoon in policy subcommittee that are coming for updated approval, um, so we'll have that.
Be ready.
As well as obviously the vote on, on the competency determination that was just presented.
And um, Ms. Dr. Matthews and Ms. Bollenei, I would just add that if, um, it's possible, since it sounds like you worked through a lot of those. Even if there's a way to um, put them in a folder for folks to look at ahead of the meeting. It makes it a lot easier to do those as part of the consent agenda too.
Yep.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a nice document going, which I think will be able to be easily ported over for that purpose.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Um, anything else?
No, I think uh, at this point, if you're willing to accept the motion, I would move that we uh, move into executive session. Um, and I believe uh, tonight, we've, we've decided that it's for um, that the purpose to, uh, it's for, just for purpose to. Um, to conduct strategy sessions um, in preparation for contract negotiation with non-union administrative personnel.
I think we are also going to talk a little bit with purpose three.
Okay, all right, for, so I make the motion that we, we move to executive session for purposes two and three as uh, shown on screen and, and in tonight's agenda.
And we will, we will be, we will.
Yeah, and we'll, and also including in the motion that we will adjourn directly from executive session and not return to public session.
Secondly amended my.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Manyargy? Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
And Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we will move into executive session and we will.
Have a, you have a Zoom link for me, Andrew, in you, in your email.
Great.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody, thank you, WinCam.
Thank you, WinCam, good night.